Okay, in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, please note the following. All Borough Planning Board meetings will be held in person on the 2nd floor of the Burnerville Municipal Building at 166 Maybrook Road. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, please note the following. All Borough Planning Board meetings will be held in person in the meeting hall on 2nd floor of the Burnerville Municipal Building at 166 Maybrook Road. Meetings will be livestreamed on YouTube with no opportunity for public comment. Members in the public wishing to offer comments or any questions will be required to attend meetings in person. The YouTube livestream access for all meetings is YouTube at Burnerville Borough Livestreams. This link will also be available on the Agenda for each meeting, which is posted on the Borough website, burnervilleborough.org, and on the Borough Hall Public voting board at least 48 hours prior to the meetings. Notice that these changes are also being emailed to the Burnerville News and the Curragh News by posting a copy on the Borough website and by filing a copy within municipal clerical on January 23, 2025. It is the intention of the Board not to continue any matter passed 11:00 PM at any regular or special meeting of the Board unless motion passed by members in priority to extend it when they are specified probable time, and same shall be eaten at the opening of each meeting. In addition, the Board does not intend to begin a new hearing after 10:00 PM. There will be a custom order of a new witness until 10:30 PM. Any hearing conducted by the Board is a quadly judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider enriching the decision. The quorum appropriate to an initial hearing is to maintain all terms.
Ms. Geller?
Present.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Stato with accent, Mr. Demoff with accent, Mr. Walden?
Here.
And Mr. Valdrin. You have a quorum with ten.
Please may I say something before we start?
Okay.
It just, I want to request that all of the Board members respond on Tuesday whether or not they are attending so that we know ahead of time that I have.
Yeah, it's highly considered for Board members not responding to any requests. None, it should be mine in your emails regardless of notification. And it should be responding. That's rude. It does not respond.
It's important.
Let me say that in a minute. Anyone get back to you in all the news?
No, we've not hear back from anyone, Mr. Chairman.
I'll take a motion to accept the minutes. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I don't think we're particularly eligible, but.
Well, wait, hold on a second. Exactly, that's what I want.
Take a motion for the first minute, for the first meeting.
Maybe you can let the Board members know who's eligible to vote on these.
Geller, Graham, Walden, those are eligible for the first minute.
Start again, motion.
We can move. Walden moves.
Thank you. And second?
I'll second.
On favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, second minute.
Everyone is eligible. Just everyone here is eligible.
Make a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second. On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hello Communications? Aaron, are you here for anything unrelated to the agenda? No resolutions? We have a bill, a small bill amount. Take a motion, remember?
Motion to develop the legal services, I don't know maybe.
Ms. Ruth Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Geller? Yes. Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
Yep.
And Mr. Valdrin?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, so this is now the main event, and which is the public hearing. The Housing Element Fair Share Plan, and Steve wanted to provide some opening remarks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to put things into context from the legal perspective. The, this is the adoption of the Housing Element Fair Share Plan of the master plan. And you know, as I was saying, we, as the planning board, are the gatekeepers of the master plan. And the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan is entirely thereof. And it is our Board that adopts the Housing Element Fair Share Plan with the MLUL procedures, which are more than Henry's law procedures, which require, of course, as well they should, in my opinion, a public hearing notice and opportunity to be heard, and then ultimately a vote on the adoption. I did have an opportunity to review the content of the notice, and it was sufficient. It was timely served and published. Published more than 10 days in advance of this evening, and served on the Office of Public Advocacy and the Sunny Six County Planning Board, as well as adjoining clerks, also 10 days prior to this evening. I think the publishing date actually is June 12th, so over more than 10 days. So the Board has jurisdiction to conduct a public hearing and adopt the Housing Element Fair Share Plan as a conclusion thereof. And I would just mention that as the Board notes, the this particular element relates in large part to our fourth round as a borough, like most other municipalities in the state of New Jersey. Not all of our qualified urban aid agencies probably said do not have this obligation, but most do. We are obligated to the Mount Laurel doctrine and the Constitution to satisfy our constitutional obligation to provide for our fair share of affordable housing for the fourth round, fourth round being July 1, 2025, and June 30, 2035. So not only is our planning board involved in the adoption of this Housing Element Fair Share Plan, but the obligation is a borough obligation. So through the Borough Council, the Borough Council is responsible for satisfying that obligation. The amended Fair Housing Act provides a litigation related process for an affordable housing dispute resolution program of former Mount Laurel judges and then current Mount Laurel judges for the final orders. And it is anticipated that as soon as the Board adopts the Housing Element Fair Share Plan this evening, that the governing body will soon thereafter endorse the adoption of the Housing Element Fair Share Plan, which also forms statutory process and the process set forth in the Administrator's Book of the Courts Directed Number 14, for those counting. They, so their, the governing bodies involved in the process as well. It is pending litigation in essence, but of course this hearing is a public hearing. So hopefully that gives everybody an idea. I suspect Ms. Caldwell, our planner, will, Special Actist of Affordable Housing, will explain some more of the legalities in the process, including the June 30 deadline will be, alternatives are if this Board and the Borough do not meet that June 30 deadline. But I don't want to steal all of the thunder, I apologize if I stole some already. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll swear, and as Caldwell said before I hit the presentation, do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please proceed with the presentation and feel free to share your qualifications with the Board and members of the public. If it's of design.
Jessica Caldwell, for the record, Borough Planner. I prepared with my office the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan before you tonight for a public hearing. As Steve noted, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national planning certification. I've been practicing as a planner for over 25 years and developed the specialty in affordable housing compliance. I've worked through the round three process, through Superior Court to certify over a dozen municipalities. And now in this fourth round process, I'm working with 20 municipalities. I've been accepted as an expert in affordable housing and Superior Court, as well as before numerous boards. So hopefully that gives people a sense of my background, if you don't know me already, and some of you do. I did prepare a PowerPoint presentation for ease of presentation tonight, and I'll go through that. And then I'll be able to answer any questions that the Board or the public have about the plan itself. We are here tonight because of the amendment to the Fair Housing Act that occurred in March of last year. That set forth deadlines for compliance and also set up the dispute resolution program through Superior Court. So the Borough has now submitted to Superior Court, accepted its obligation. And now in order to stave up susceptibility to builder's remedy losses, we need to, within 48 hours of adoption or by June 30th, submit and adopt the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan to the dispute resolution program for review. So that's essentially why we're here tonight, also to have the public hearing. Does the Housing Element, as Steve said, does get adopted as an element of your master plan, which is why it's for you as the planning board. And then it's a unique document in that, as you know, most master plan documents, the planning board adopts it and that that's the end of the story. But because of the need to fund and implement the Fair Share Plan, there's also an obligation by the Borough Council to endorse the plan. So that is also something that the Borough Council is planning to do as well. So I will share the screen.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, while you're doing that, and so will the, to the extent the PowerPoint may have one or more documents that are not in the plan as it exists, I'm anticipating, I candidly haven't seen it yet, but maybe we should just mark it, sort of the Board exhibit, I don't know. But we'll, we'll call it P1, if that's okay with the Board, and then it could be available after this evening.
Sure, and I did send a copy to Ms. Salarda, so the Board does have a copy of it. So if you want us, I can also send it as a key to it, if that's easier, she had the actual PowerPoint presentation, so. Yeah. And that's fine. It's not obviously exact, but it does contain the information from them. Oops, it's not.
Just one question, is there any particular reason, and maybe to stand up with Steve tight, why none of this was shared with the planning board in advance? No discussion?
I'm sorry.
No, nothing was shared, no meetings with the planning board in advance of this in the first word?
You mean?
Doing this?
Right, yes. Unfortunately, because of the short timeframe, yeah, there just wasn't.
You didn't seek to gather any guidance for information as you came up with these either poor properties, possible properties and/or concerns?
I'm sorry, I don't.
The order is, you as planner did not seek to discuss any of the potential opportunities for creation at this point with the planning?
Right, so I was hired by the Borough Council and.
I mean, you researched, you didn't feel it necessary to consult with any?
I would say, you know, under normal circumstances, we would have. Unfortunately, there just wasn't time available to do that.
Yes, when this was silent.
Pretty much when it was published and given to the Board.
And it was, we just got it on Tuesday, so I'm asking, you don't know what date you submitted?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the, it was noticed and publicly available, certainly available for planning board use. Available to anyone who wants to, who wanted to look at it. As of at least, as far as I know, from the noticing and following up on it, June 12th, so that would have been.
What days ago?
My question was. Something's in there. Yes, obviously I said it because when I read it, I should have done it because of notice. When did you complete this?
When this bubble was completed, it was when I gave it to Ms. Salarda.
Maybe I could help, it stated June 26th, wasn't completed on June 26th, it was completed 12 or so days ago, I think, or 14.
Two weeks ago. I gave it to.
So the first they saw the property that you selected and this report, and they knew anything about what went into it, it was 12 days ago, literally.
Not us, not the planning board, the mind retraining is the governing body, here's direction to properties that the town has control, meaning ownership of. Was aware, it's always.
It just can't happen again, this crap. I know it's 10 years from now, but can't do that.
If I may, I know it doesn't change anything, don't need to say it would, but just so everybody fully understands and I appreciate the input from everyone. The, as I mentioned earlier, the Borough Council has the obligation to ensure satisfaction, I can repeat the word, of the obligation, constitutional obligation, you know, fourth round. Prospectively and presently, doesn't preclude the involvement of subcommittees, planning board, or not subject, or members or such, I'm not suggesting as such. But also, the way the process unfolded, as I've experienced this in multiple municipalities, the way this process unfolded this time, and if anyone wants to blame the legislature, you might not be wrong, in my opinion, in doing so. The statute was amended, very compressed timeframes were established. Some have called them draconian, ridiculous, whatever, I'll say compressed. And in fact, I'm aware of in one municipality at least, they were forced to adopt their Housing Element Fair Share Plan, the planning board, satisfying their obligation before the court order was entered, establishing what their obligation was. So it was a very, very compressed timeframe, many orders weren't entered until May or June. Also, part of the process, and I'm just telling you my own experience, as I serve as Affordable Housing Council elsewhere. And part of the process is such that you require to consider, and if property owners or prospective developers who make inquiries to the municipality. I had one circumstance where the day, night before the hearing, in another municipality, a property owner made an inquiry for the first time. We had to adjourn the hearing so that it could be considered, and a determination made whether they would be included in the plan or not, explained why they were included or why they were excluded. So the simple point being, I apologize for going on so long, is there are a lot of factors, a confluence of factors, that made it particularly difficult to, excuse me, difficult, my experience, I've done this for a while. Or there to be the type of involvement over a long period of time of multiple stakeholders and interested parties that might otherwise have occurred, and certainly most if not all would have wanted to occur. It was, to a large extent, municipalities were victims of a statute that, from which there were no exceptions, deadlines, all of which had draconian penalties, i.e. automatic build with remedy losses, loss of immunity from therefrom. So in fairness to everyone, when you're working under those circumstances, expecting it to come out and have the type of involvement over a long period of time that everyone would like, unfortunately, not realistic, and shouldn't happen.
I disagree.
That, that's fine.
You can say it long, but there was no.
The chairman would be finished. They, that's the legislation, and that's the process. Not to say that more could have been done, I'm sure more could have been done, perhaps.
Something could have been done, not more.
We're here now, so we're here now, and we're going to hear here. So there's no sense in us arguing with each other, that would be.
No, we just put that in the background.
I'm just explaining the circumstances of the legislation and how this process took place. But anyway, we're back to the important thing, it should be the plan. So we'll probably fight.
Thank you, I certainly appreciate your comments, and going forward, we'll definitely make, make the effort.
I anticipate you will do.
What's up?
I said, I'm going to anticipate you will hear some.
All right, so the housing element is the element of the master plan. It's essentially has required elements from municipal municipal law in the Fair Housing Act, including a community overview, relationship to other plans. We always have a background and history of the municipality in compliance with affordable housing. And then we include demographics about employment, housing characteristics, an inventory of housing stock, and then an overview of where housing can be built, zoning within the municipality, and that essentially makes up what the housing element is. The Fair Share Plan itself is, is the plan for the Borough to comply with the affordable housing obligations. And we always go back to the beginning, from the 1987 to 1999 prior round, which is the first and second rounds combined. We talk about the third round from 1999 until now, June 2025. And then the fourth round started July 1st, 2025 to 2035, going forward. And then, so part of that will include status of the existing units. We try to go back and review, especially the third round, to see what was built, what wasn't built. Are all of the mechanisms in that round still viable? And or were there things that were done that maybe weren't even in the plan prior? And in this case, there, there were some changes to the third round plan. And then we talk about fourth round mechanisms. So the prior round, as I said, it's the first and second round, 1987 to 1999. The Borough's obligation was 127 units. You had prior cycle credits, nine credits for that. You did regional contribution agreements, which are no longer permitted. But at the time, it was essentially the Borough sending money, a certain amount of money per unit to urban aid municipalities that had a need to rehabilitate existing low and moderate income units. So there was money sent to New Brunswick as a regional contribution agreement for 41 credits. And money sent to Perth Amboy as a regional contribution agreement for 36 credits. There are also two affordable housing projects, a Pine Ridge condo units, which is 26 units, and Rolling Hills at Burnerville, which is 15 credits. Were a total of 127 credits, they met the prior round. So the third round also included a present need or rehabilitation obligation that was met through a municipal home improvement program, as well as participation in the Somerset County Rehabilitation Program. The Fair Share Plan for the third round, 1999 through this month, end of this month, was for 215 units for prospective need, or that's a new construction obligation. So there was a Habitat for Humanity project that generated four credits. There was a group home at the Conti site, which was four credits plus four credits of bonus credits for a total credits. There was a North Finley Avenue 100% affordable condo project for two, two units. And 210 North Finley 100% affordable age restricted units for 46 credits. And then what we refer to as a scattered site 100% affordable project, which morphed a little bit during the third round, some sites were taken out and someone put them in, put in. And actually, the total number of credits increased, it's 108 credits. We have a project on Maybrook Road for 25 credits, a project on Mount Airy for 12 credits, and 63 Burns Avenue for 22 credits, for a total of 49. Bonus credits to come up to about 108. We also have the Quimby Lane.
To get a little bit something they were going after at the RPM Bureau.
Yes.
Okay, I just, it was.
Did they get their funding?
Did they get their funding?
The funding, yeah, we expedited it through, so they could get the funding. Just wanted to, thank you.
Yes. Quimby Lane redevelopment inclusionary zone was one of them projects. It's, the redevelopment plan is in place, it's for 13 credits. And then we have a quarry site inclusionary zone, which is affordable housing, AH08 zone, that provided for 28 credits towards the third round, and then we're carrying 23 credits over to the fourth round. We also did extensions of expiring controls during the third round. And that's at the Pine Ridge condos and the Rolling Hills. Those were built essentially 30 years ago. So as those deed restrictions expire, the Borough has the ability to extend those deed restrictions. So we are in the process of doing that also for the fourth round, but in the third round, six, six units were extended. And so they have to expire within the round that the extensions apply to. So those ones were expiring during the third round, they were able to be extended. And then we, as you'll see, we have several in the fourth round that we're also working on. So that's a total of 215 credits. So the good news is you met the third round. And going forward into the fourth round, we no longer have a rehabilitation or present need obligation. So that was set at zero units, that's good news. That means that you don't have substandard units in town that need to be brought up to code, at least according to census data. So the prospective need obligation that was set by the DCA and that the Borough agreed to was 113 units. So as I mentioned, we have the quarry site inclusionary zone, where we carried over some credits, we have 31 credits there. We have an inclusionary zone proposed at 65 Claremont Road for six credits. We have a redevelopment area, which is referred to as Clarice redevelopment area for 26 credits. And then we have the I2 industrial overlay zone, which is 37 credits. And then with the extension of expiring controls, we're proposing 13 credits. We have up to 35 available, so the Borough is going to be working on those. One issue that happened is the Fair Housing Act was amended, and the cost per unit went up. It was $10,000 per unit that the municipality was obligated to pay the homeowners. Now it's 20,000, so that is a higher number. So, you know, we're putting in 13, if, if we have the availability and the money to do more, and homeowners agree, we will complete as many as possible.
The max number though, in that chart was 35?
The max is 35 that we have available to extend.
If the town believes they can fund 13.
Correct.
But if they found additional money?
If we find additional funds, I'm, we'll extend it up to 35.
And then that could then adjust the other development sites.
Absolutely, and then if something doesn't develop or whatnot, it also fills in, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yep, thank you. So just to go down further into each site, we have the quarry site inclusionary zone. It was part of the round three plan, it includes 31 properties. It is a durationally adjusted zone and will remain so because it is outside of the sewer service area. It is a durationally adjusted zone and will remain so because it is outside of the sewer service area. It is zone for up to fifty one affordable units. And we've proposed eight redevelopment bonus credits for the fourth round. Since some of those sites, uh, would be redeveloped.
On the course of the panhandle that's there, is that?
I'm sorry?
Topologically developable? On the course of, you see a little more of the leg from down there.
The panhandle portion?
Yeah, is that?
It's part of the lot, it's part of the zone, it doesn't necessarily mean it will be developed.
It could be open space.
Yeah, absolutely.
Was it taking, I mean, again, I know some of that area is bloodway. Where, where Roseville is.
We haven't done any studies to determine, I mean, it may come up as part of our compliance, you know, we'll have to do some. Drill down a little bit more into the zone and, and developability and. It is a durationally adjusted zone that was in our third round and. So we, we'd like to carry it forward and, and keep it as an inclusionary zone if, if we can.
Question related to that, it was accepted, uh, and part of our very different compliance when we posed in the second one of your third round?
Yes, it was.
Reasonable to assume that the court found it. Such as the goal level of the, of and the third and the fourth one?
So yes, I mean, there's, there's some compliance mechanisms, they, the court, uh, directive. Asked for layouts and, and you know, more compliance as we go forward, this isn't, you know. We kind of wish we submitted June thirtieth and we were all done, but there is a time period of review. By August thirty first. Uh, anyone can challenge our plan. And then between August thirty first and March fifteenth of next year, will be reviewed at least by, uh, the program. And we have to submit compliance documents and, and to a certain extent, we may need to. Address developability of, of prior round zones and so this, this.
Put appendix, reference of implementation ordinances. Because that's also a step probably required in the American Fair Housing Act, right?
Correct.
And, and the reason that it's only R A P is because. One needs to have a final housing element fair share plan ultimately determine whether it's challenged or not. In order to then go to the step in taking those R A P implementation ordinances. Maybe filling in some more detail and then actually adopt them, right?
Yes, we need, we need some.
Twenty six outside date for the statute, right?
That's, that's the date for the statute and, uh, I guess there, there was some. Board findings recently that that was, that was the date, not, not by June thirtieth or not the.
And if any project comes forth out of either the inclusionary zones or any. Inclusionary project, uh, uh, there would be public. Participation in the actual docking of the zoning ordinances. Or any redevelopment ordinances because they would be, it would be public hearings associated with the governing body, correct?
Yeah, there are public hearings associated with the governing body and they're all referred to the planning board for review consistency for the master plan, so their very least would be here for that.
And they proceeded after the ordinances with actual projects. They would more than likely be before this court or site plan application.
Yes, that they proceed with projects, but at the very, at the very least were proposing zoning.
Right, this is the beginning, so to speak, the planning and the, uh. Provision of the realistic opportunity, uh, for the development to occur, is that the accurate?
Yes, this is really the beginning of the beginning. It seems like we're, it seems like we're far along, but I, I'm just judging from how the third round was. This will be the last time we.
More to come, there's so much detail minutia to get into at this stage is the point.
So just, I just, I just want to affirm that in this site, we have fifty one potentials. That, that's the twenty percent set aside that. Fifty one, so it's, it's presuming over two hundred and fifty units, twenty percent of which are affordable.
No, that's, it's currently, right, this is an existing zone that we're just carrying forward. We haven't. Yeah, we haven't proposed changes to this zone. But that may occur as, as we go forward and we see. Sixty five Claremont is an inclusionary zone, is proposed. Not currently zoned, it includes four properties, it's just under an acre. Uh, the proposal is for up to twenty eight, um, multi-family apartments with six supportive units. Claris redevelopment area is not an air redevelopment area as of yet. A lot of borough council is proposing to. Review it and designate it as a area of need of redevelopment. It includes four lots with one portion of a municipal parking lot. And the proposal for that is up to ninety four market rate units with eighteen. Affordable units that would be designated as senior. Units.
That's the total, there's another property?
I would have to go out of my.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Yeah, I'll circle back to that.
And you said that was age restricted, so fair, so you were that age, boys, children?
Right, right, so that's, that's part of the, the plan, the market rate units would be one and two bedroom. And then as the seniors, the units would be one bedroom.
And only because we just, we just found out today. Did you, behind the scenes, whatever, you handled the lead restriction that's on lot twenty two? That can't be used for housing?
No.
Okay, uh, you insert the box, let me just take that back. It's deed restricted, so. Above everything, portion north, north of a parking area.
Okay, yeah.
Depending on how they design it.
I mean, we just have the concepts at this point, it's nothing's set, so. I mean, going forward, we can review that.
So we're working with concepts and if we get to the point, but we need to meet this obligation and we can't do it, can we just?
We would need to find other sites, yeah.
You realize, I think it's that there's the ten, the thirty five revisions of the draw.
Yes.
Wouldn't they have, if their provision had have produced a part of this plan or?
Yes. So that is a, a little bit of a question for us. For why we could find funding, maybe necessary, who knows, um, but there is at least. Some extras in there and that's, we didn't want to rely totally on that because then we would have to. Guarantee that not funding, which is pretty hard, so.
But the option's still there on the table.
It is, yeah, so if there was something that came up where. This one wasn't feasible, we'd either fund another one, rely on. So many extensions, maybe a combination of both.
Similar to many municipalities, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so we do our best right now to identify what we think is realistic opportunities at this point.
The point is, I'm just confirming, the point is, we, we weren't obligated to. Like in a jury, we didn't have that interest submitted, you know, like even if you have other. Other ideas or things that could possibly be used, but it's not like we had to give them the assurance, but. We'll hit our number because this is what we're planning on, oh, and we have two alternates. That's not part of that process, although it might be.
Board of chair, you might find that. Original, that's something you need to strip it. And then we're gonna have to come back and visit. So like the juror.
Yeah, I would hope that, I thought I had kind of like, well, there, there are some other things, but we. Didn't formalize them in the plan because that's, that would be improved, you know, but there are other. Potentials.
Things like group homes or, you know, small hundred percent affordable projects that come up as opportunities. We don't necessarily put those in the plan because you also, anything you put in the plan, you have to show that you can fund it right away. That you can build it within two years, all those types of things, but. You know, if, if say a group home opportunity came up and it was built, it would count as units and. You know, it could take the place of something else, so. We have the I two industrial overlay zone, this would be proposed as an overlay not to, um. Supersede the zoning because we know that our, our business was on the site. However, if the, uh, property owners or somebody sold it, who decided to develop, uh, multi-family. We have up to a hundred and twenty five units proposed, with twenty five affordable. Units on the site. So just again, summary of the plan. Um, zero units of rehabilitation need, prospective need is a hundred and thirteen. That's met through the quarry site, carryover credits. Uh, sixty five Claremont inclusionary zone, the Claris redevelopment area. I two overlay zone and then the extension of expiring controls. Yeah, let me just. Sharing. So the question, uh.
Currently, it is in the downtown area for the, uh, Claremont Road. Collection, that, the, the current zone is. There is thirty five per acre?
Right.
I, I know, I'm, I'm just affirming, okay.
Less in this area. Um, because there, we're proposing.
Thirty two.
Thirty two with a satisfied, twenty percent satisfied.
Right, you know, I just wanted. I know it'll be in potentially redevelopment or whatever, need of redevelopment, whatever, I just wanted to. Make sure it was at least, how it related to our existing zone.
Right, so it, it's, it's roughly similar to existing zoning, except I believe they would be looking for a higher height. Um, because of the sort of narrow size, uh, and then we have to have parking under. Uh, again, we've just heard cons- conceptual.
We're not there.
But we're not there.
Okay, but just on the surface. We adjusted the downtown zones to at least four or whatever, to allow for thirty five.
So, I think. That representation, what's expected of us now? Well, have you read it? Cause I do have two quick questions for you, but once, uh, uh, there's quite a lot of the presentation. We have members of the public, uh, who, I will swear that the Republican. Yeah, I swear everybody in, so you can add questions, comments as much as you like. Uh, and then, uh, then board people will address those and then board members. Uh, uh, if, assuming the board members have any questions or further questions. Uh, if we have a resolution that was distributed by which if you adopted, you would be, uh, adopting to have an overview. Alright, I just want to put a name show out here. If I may, the chairman, just a couple of real quick. What's that? I just want to know, you know, the order, what you, we lined up and, and a one order. Would never allow, they, they, uh, the, um. Mr. Corwell, uh, in your professional opinion, uh, as a professional planner, applies to the state of Jersey, the particular expertise of the portal of housing. Uh, does the housing element fair share plan propose guide the use of land in the borough in order to protect? Public health and safety and promotes the general welfare?
Yes, it does.
Uh, and in your professional opinion, uh, is the housing element fair share plan designed to achieve access? To affordable housing, to meet the town's playground, outdoor constitutional, affordable housing obligation? And considered, and does it consider the land? Excuse me, and does it consider the land for most appropriate for the destruction of low and moderate income housing?
Yes, it does.
Questions that derive from municipal and useful on Fair Housing Act. And, uh, just for confirmation, if the board were not to adopt the housing element fair share plan this evening. Uh, or by June thirtieth of twenty twenty five, it's going to be amended Fair Housing Act, am I correct? Uh, that the, uh, municipal would lose its immunity from builders' remedy draws. And be subject, in essence, to losing, uh, municipal powers of zone. Uh, in, in this borough for those. And, and cedings will already be ready to developments in respect to heightened transparency of the law.
Yes, if we don't adopt this, we can lose our.
In fact, by statute, it would be in that until automatic, correct?
Yes.
The, um, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
I only had one circle back question, which was, let's see, I presume the Claris property.
It's about an acre.
So it's an acre and a half, and how many units are here?
So in the plan, we have, uh, ninety four.
Really?
That's it?
Really?
Yes.
On an acre and a half. How did that get through?
I'm sorry?
How did that get through? What's your justification, what was the plan or what did you? How did you? Feel that that's an appropriate number of, 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 and that's all?
Uh, we have a, a concept and a proposal from developer that wanted to be included in the plan. Uh, the council reviewed it and, and it's still a negotiation with the developer. So this is a conceptual proposal at this time, we haven't thoroughly reviewed it. That we're including it as a conceptual proposal for. You wanna see that? Yeah. I'm just going to see.
Well, it's not part of the master plan, the proposal to be redevelopment plan. And, and area need of redevelopment and a redevelopment plan, so it's. Not the master plan. Rides the plans and the zoning.
Just, just zoom in on it, I think you have the size of the beach lot. And I think if you add that up. Over two acres, as I said, it sounds very loaded, Bob, do the math for you.
Their engineering plan. But you're right. Yeah, yeah, it's about two point.
It's two point five acres.
Yeah. So I was looking at their engineering plan, but. I don't know, it's amazing.
Yeah, so that, that will bring it to mid thirties of my calculator. It's, it's like thirty five now.
About a third, fifty, maybe it's.
It's not.
Yeah, but I think it's deed restricted for parking, not necessarily for development.
Recreation of your stone.
But it's, it's two and a half acre lot, so it's probably like thirty five million a year.
As I said, they're coming up with conceptual plans. They may only use that for parking, yeah.
Take thirty four instead of. Yeah, it's like thirty four. Thirty, I got thirty two there. Leave there.
Thirty-seven?
Yeah. All right.
Okay, and I just want to have senior in it, I'm just trying to look at the.
Yeah.
It's so worrying, I, I mean, they're, they're senior, and as you testified, they're, are presented. Their uh lower number of bedrooms.
Beds. Their market rate units are the mar, the market. I mean, they're market rate, non-in restricted for the ninety-four, but those are proposed to be one and two bedrooms. And then the affordables would all be in one bedroom, I'm senior.
Senior, so I'm, I'm just trying to, but uh, yeah.
Trying to make.
计入 the numbers for my children.
Okay, thank you for your clarification. Any, any questions from the board?
I have, I just have an administrative comment. You corrected your um, your report from Mount Arlington, but you left Vernon Township and the three point two.
What?
Three point two, we're not running township?
They left, maybe the actual work.
The report. He, um, the updated, we had one that uh Chairman Graham saw that you referred to us as Mount Arlington.
Yeah.
You're not three point two, you refer to us as Vernon Township.
Okay.
Yeah, and any more typos, please. For, for all meetings and powers are doing, people, all muscles and I will, now, are doing is uh capturing the ones that are fought. And the adopted resolution essentially provides that if there are any of the typos that are, ultimately what is fought, what is adopted, what is filed, is a updated version cleaning up any typo that. Distributors, I like that one. The uh, the uh, uh, and the community, the quality not substantial, change revisions.
So we also had, just to, for the record, under the Clermont redevelopment area and Claris. We clarified that it was ninety-four market, um, non-senior and eighteen senior. And then on thirty-two, it was up to thirty-five total extensions. Uh, that was also.
It's thirty-four.
Yeah, that is a little higher.
No, so what you said was, I think, ninety, ninety-four total units period.
Right.
With a twenty percent set aside, which are the ages.
Which would be the eighteen.
Which is the, okay.
Right.
That's, that's different than ninety-four market rate plus.
Right.
That's all.
Right.
Correct, this way, so.
How many market units would this turn up for?
I don't have the total number out of that.
Which, it is, but if I made the clarifications, by that question, are you asking, for example, if you took the hundred and thirteen total credit obligation and assumed they presumptive set aside, they were all marked inclusionary project? Uh, and were saying for sale, uh, uh, twenty percent set aside, that maybe fifteen percent rental, but uh, you know, I guess the easy way to do is multiply five by one thirteen. And you could, because they're looking at a plan that provided for five hundred and sixty time. I did that without accounting there.
Well, it's credits too, it's roughly five hundred totally.
Or, yeah.
Where you're going and thinking.
True.
Yeah.
I mean, the fact of the matter is, it's.
And then.
This lowers the numbers both of you, you market, so four hundred roughly would be.
Yeah, we have twenty-eight bonuses and then thirteen extensions. And then the rest are from inclusionary, so. So it's about seventy-five.
Any questions? So.
I'll, I'll get members of the public and I'll swear you, so that you have the ability to ask questions and make comments. There's a common set of ways to test me. I think it's a public hearing. Somebody's gotta go first, and then somebody's gotta go last, I think. Please raise your right hand, you swear you got a referral test for you about to give us the truth, the whole truth and other than the truth. Thank you, please give your name and address.
Right, yeah. Something Leyland, I must say, out of you.
Please play that to me.
Leyland, L B one, L A, Andy.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I'm interested in the Claris one, so just a few questions around that. Uh, why the name Claris, where did that come from? I think he kind of answered it earlier, because it says a developer already there.
Yeah, that was their, their name for it, yeah.
Yeah, because there's a Claris in Berkeley.
Yes.
So who came up with the numbers of the place for? Was it you or?
Uh, was sort of a, it wasn't me personally, but it was a combination of, of negotiation with the council.
Absolutely, the council was involved, that's not true.
Okay, how many levels would that be?
We don't have.
Oh, yeah, that doesn't necessarily contain this plan.
So you have an idea on that, so.
Not yet.
At this point, the, just, the gross envelope, it's not the detail. So, you're just, so we're all on the same page. Should they come later on and you start getting to that level? And ninety-four doesn't work, then ninety-four doesn't work, then we're gonna have to review the whole plan again. Right, but the expectation is that ninety-four should work, will it work?
And, and if it helps, I apologize if we're overran, so we all try to help. The, 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 there are these steps, and the next step would be the ordinances themselves, and then potentially a practical site plan application where all those, you'd have more than a, a plan and more than a concept, you'd have a site plan, and all these details would have to be addressed. If, and when again, those sort of steps.
I think this question was, I would say, there is, like, what's the normal ratio of affordable to market rates?
It's a twenty percent set aside for pretty much all the developments, so. Most part of that multiplier five, essentially.
Fairness, he said maximum, it's not, there's not a maximum per se, but it's about as good as you're getting. Get in most cases, so anyhow, it's the reasonable sense.
It's a fate that we may be up for get more through negotiations with developers, but twenty percent.
Yeah, dangerous, if you're getting more, there's a big problem for like any negotiation, there's a reason.
No, that's, this again, a bit more. Um, you have an idea of where the entrances will be, might be on Morristown Church Street?
No, not yet.
Yeah, I drive down Church Street every day, and sometimes I take a different way, because it's very difficult to turn that up, but as it is, sometimes to turn that in, you would be.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir, thank you so much.
Eric, now fifty-one questions. You've been through this before, you swear to God, I refer to the testimony about to give you the truth, but who's another? And, and you can see.
Question that I'm just.
I mean, questions and comments, please.
I'm gonna try to be organized about, I don't know, it's just been a couple of words, but um. What are you gonna do with that, like, yeah? Same as that. Uh, first of all, just um, I, I want to echo the uh, the comments um, made by the chairman and uh, put them like Dellar, um, I read a local paper, I don't see a report of my local paper, but I read it a lot, followed uh government, local government, not just environmental, but also surrounding some of the hills, towns. And reading for months, March, April, May, how they were planning on meeting their round four affordable housing departments, constitutional departments. Say, we have this developer company propose this, and we have, you know, this idea for this type of, all in open public meetings with their planner there, soliciting feedback from the public, getting feedback from the public, saying, hey, planner, do you think that's something we could look at to improve this? And in certain cases, they were, um, you know, looked at what the public had to say about these different ideas, these different compliance mechanisms, and put it in place. Improve their, improve their plan, you can make everybody happy, never can, but, you know, um, did what they could. Not vertical. Apparently, uh, there have been multiple meetings of the council, not public meetings, I've been watching, uh, where these different options for compliance mechanisms um were discussed. Maybe developers were present, maybe they just sent along their box seats or their um emails ahead of time, whatever it may be. Our plan was present. And who was? Public boss. You can tell how I feel about that, I, I, it's ironic, I, I, you know, I also read that you were spending, what, thousands of dollars on, on uh text surveys, so you can show how responsive we are to community sentiment. But when it comes to the meaningful, impactful decisions that will shape the future of our borough for the next ten years, and really well beyond that, the public and the planning board is absolutely intentionally, purposefully, and one hundred percent absolutely excluded from those discussions. Now, um, not the go, developers very much included. The, the property owners, a lot of the bigger property owners very much included, not the public. And not just that, here we are, we're four days away from when this has to be adopted, or else the, the builders around me, bogeyman, is gonna catch. Right, that's, that's the pitch. So it not only presented with the least possible involvement from the public, but the planning board, but also at such a time, in such a place, where the opportunity for meaningful improvement, input, to possibly, potentially incrementally change what seems to be the borough's clear day course of action on affordable housing round four, negative. It clearly, at this point, right? So, I mean, and we, first of all, just on, on, on what was, on what was available. I, I went and Denise was kind enough to uh, to make available the um, the report uh, that was written. Uh, and I reviewed it, it's, it seems to me like that's changed between the ten day notice period and, and tonight. I, I'd like to figure out, first of all, the report says nothing about a redevelopment area at Mr. Gallus Properties on Clermont Road. Is not intended to be a, does the council intend on designating Mr. Gallus Properties an area in need of redevelopment? We're suing for a local redevelopment, I have no.
That is a, that's a stage we're not at yet, for this, for this problem. And the, you know, and I understand you're coming up.
Let's call them, because her associate appeared on Monday at a council meeting, gave a short presentation about the plan. And within that presentation, my recollection was that she said that's going to be an area in need of redevelopment designation. So I just would, you know, here, what is, what is the plan? Is the plan what is written here, or is the plan what your associate stated uh, at a public meeting on Monday?
So what the plan is, is that that is a parcel that is going to be designated as a prospective spot for the town to solve its affordable housing. I'm answering your question.
On what basis, what is the basis of your knowledge?
A redevelopment attorney that knows how.
This is a factual question, not a question.
Aaron, can you just let me speak?
Sure.
Okay.
See. I'll.
All right, so how that property gets developed is not before this board tonight. Right, whether it is through an overlay zone, whether it is through a variance, whether it is through a redevelopment plan or an area in need of redevelopment, is not the discussion for tonight. So you may have found an error or something that you think is a golden nugget that will tear this whole thing apart, but I'm telling you, it's not what we're talking about tonight.
Thank you for that. The Claris redevelopment area says in sentence one of the paragraph, the borough will seek to designate the area shown below as an area in need of redevelopment. So clearly, with respect to that property, there is an intention, present intention expressed in your report by the borough to designate that area as an area in need of redevelopment, is that correct?
That's correct.
No such intent as far as this report reflects is reflecting from Mr. Gallus um, brought from the entire.
Correct, I think as Mr. DeMarco said.
That's all, thank you.
Where, you, where she just said public hearing, or the doctor, the housing fair here plan, where it's grandstanding political purposes and not, and you don't want the planner to answer your question, and you're court examining her as if it were a litigation. Uh, because you are a lawyer, I believe you, if, I don't know, I think you told me you don't practice law, you're a lawyer, you don't, or you're not a firm or working right now, but the, the, but frankly, uh, there is a process and procedure, and there's a purpose for this hearing. And respectfully, you're changing it to something else, and, and you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be, in my. Okay, so please, answer the questions that you have that are pertinent to this public hearing, make the comments that you have that are pertinent to this public hearing for this board at this time.
Thank you, John. Can you tell me how the uh sixty-five Clermont Road Inclusionary zoning um zone uh first came to your attention as potential for the borough to meet its round four um, landlord obligation?
The property owner recuts is being one.
One's up.
Honey, don't recall exactly when I was.
Roughly?
I forgot, I'm not, I don't really recall, I don't wanna misspeak.
So uh, this property is located directly to the west of the uh Milkwood Con, Convent, is that correct?
Yes.
Twenty-three units there?
Yes.
Slightly up the street from the uh proposed Essex um apartment, um, the units that were approved by the planning board last year, twenty-eight units. Okay, uh, it, it's, it's also directly across the street and north um, from the uh Quimby Lane Development Area, is that correct? Eighty-six units there? Yeah, just about, yeah, right. The um. Did you take into account how the extension for development of these properties might impact uh, such things as traffic, entrance, egress from Quimby Lane?
We have not gotten that far with this yet.
All right.
I thought in the, in the Quimby Lane overlay, there is no Quimby Lane and Mill Street intersection anymore, correct, in the overlay? The, the proposed, sorry, the, the the proposal for that entire Quimby Lane area, I believe the Quimby Lane and Mill Street intersection was eliminated.
We don't, we don't have a project for Quimby right now, so it's hard to say exactly.
Conceptual room.
Yeah.
That intersection.
There's new presence uh, proposal there right now.
In your mind, it's still present, that's what I could hear.
Still is open for Quimby Lane redevelopment.
It's redevelopment, but there's certainly.
And, and a minimum for the Quimby Lane redevelopment. Uh, right now, maybe it's gonna be changing, but right now it is, yes.
The plan is, is like zoning, so if there was a conceptual form for that, that underlied how the zone was developed, it, it could be younger, it could be a different. But there's, there's no plan currently, there's no.
So, so.
There's no problem.
This is not a hearing on the Quimby Lane redevelopment. Continue with your question.
Yeah.
I'm looking at Quimby Lane.
No, I understand you, but I don't want to go down a path of.
Going back to the um, the earlier housing element section of your report, um. You mentioned that uh the. Housing element fair share plan needs speaking to account um certain other regional master plan and um guidance, is that correct?
Yes.
Including the uh Highland Board Protection Planning Council's master plan, regional master plan?
Yes.
Uh are you aware or is your understanding that the Highlands Regional Master Plan prohibits construction within three hundred feet of open water?
Not necessarily.
Sure. Uh prohibits construction on Steve Stokes with twenty percent or above?
The areas that we're proposing development are are primarily existing developed, so they're figured differently than I would say Highlands resources that are undeveloped.
Thank you. We'll look at um. Second, three point four on the report, projecting how it's got. That's table fourteen in there. That shows, yes, from the uh Department of Community Affairs. Housing in certified from two thousand twenty twenty four, is that correct?
Two thousand fourteen.
Excuse me, uh it says on the bottom, two thousand, but you're right, that you're right, the the chart shows from two thousand four, but the little patch on the bottom says two thousand, but that's obviously there.
What are you looking at? Which table?
Page twenty one.
Table or table fourteen?
Page twenty.
It was probably a certified by, I don't know, but it was probably a period of two thousand, two thousand twenty four that was in the certified thing and.
They just didn't mention.
Or it started in two thousand and four, the chart.
But it gave it a twenty. Oh, it doesn't end, doesn't have twenty twenty four, yeah. Well, it has, it's in terms of, you know, it's kind of, it's what we could get from DCA at the time.
What what DCA has? But not saying DCA. You're wrong.
Oh, you are?
No. So they have a total of nineteen multifamily units um created in Burnerville uh within that time period.
Yes.
So, I mean, just from my own personal experience, you know, with watching uh planning board and familiarity with the town. I think built in twenty eighteen, so it took obviously twenty nineteen, twenty five military, had twenty three units. The Heritage of Claremont uh had twenty units, I think it was point twenty, point one. The, I know it hasn't been uh been created yet, but it's been approved, the twenty eight units at um the Essex. Uh you got six units of Equonet on the corner. So. The way I look at it, you look at that, it adds up to ninety five approved multifamily units all between, I'll say last seven years. The conclusion that you draw from the DCA's numbers is that the data reveals a sustained pattern of slow residential growth with heavy emphasis on low density housing. And if you look at the, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, Mr. Rossi's one fourteen Claremont, he's got four town on going there, so that's ninety nine, about a hundred, ninety nine multifamily units. Um would you say that? Yeah, hundred ninety nine multifamily units in the last, you know, seven years supports a finding that there's slow residential growth, especially in the multifamily market?
Certainly going forward, you do, I mean, that's based on this table. I think I think your answer is not going forward, but. I mean.
The table only shows nineteen, if you would adjust military and and heritage at Claremont, that's forty three. And that was in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um so. Hey, second to my comment, the, you know, the way I look at it, when I see that is, you know, we had our. Wholesale rezoning of our downtown to permit high density residential multifamily construction in October twenty twenty. Um and, you know, since then, any developments been fighting headwinds of. Covid, supply chain disruptions, um you know, uh. Difficult lending environments with the Fed raising rates and now um, you know, tariffs on poured steel and, you know, building Canadian lumber, building materials. And yet we're still generating, you know. Significant, I would call it, for a town of our size, significant multifamily construction. I I think that, you know, what when you look at the, you know, what what the borough's. Compliant or or reasonable possibility, which which is, you know, what what we need to establish in order to um satisfy our our constitutional environment. You know, it seems to me that the zoning that we put in place in twenty twenty, that we're not taking any credit for whatsoever in this round four. More than adequately provides a. Reasonable opportunity for the creation of affordable housing. You have. You know, I look, like I said, I look at some of these other towns and what they're doing for for their affordable and they're talking about, you know, they're reasoning they get, they have developer who has thirty acres and and, you know, is gonna build townhomes and that, and and the densities are something like, you know. About ten, twenty at the most. Unit per acre on just those individual developers' lots. We took hundred fifteen acres of our downtown. And and zone, in my opinion, it was almost like we lost the mother of all builder's revenue lawsuits for thirty five units per acre, that's essentially. The both density zone district of downtown North Town. And we're not saying that that has any impact on the borough's ability to reasonably generate. Affordable housing and you're talking about, you know, prime real estate, the all all utility service, water, sewer. According to your location by uh public transit, uh major highway seventy two eighty seven, relatively flat for our area. Absolutely prime real estate to be developed, at thirty five units an acre. Hundred fifteen acres in our downtown. I did not, it's uh. That would create four thousand twenty five housing. If if it was developed um. And and obviously, it's not all gonna be identity thirty five unit apartments, but doesn't need to all be. Four thousand twenty five, um but just as a side, that would, you know, conservatively. Forget, forget that, four thousand twenty five. Um at twenty percent required by the F H A, you're looking at eight hundred and five. Affordable housing, which, when you give the one point five percent housing credit that you get because every single one of those prior zones for uh commercial. Don't get your cap though.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm not, I'm not saying it all has to be taken now, but I mean, whatever, you're you're at you're at eight hundred five. You know, if if you were to get the the housing credits, you'd be at twelve hundred, and I understand that you're not gonna get all of those, but you're talking about, you know. Seven, eight, nine, ten times our fair share number provided by overlaying our entire downtown, hundred fifteen acres, that thirty five units an acre. Why do we need to do? And why do we need to do areas need redevelopment, which, I'll I'll back out, I'm not I'm not gonna dig that out of you. I I think that. We've absolutely discounted um what we've already done in in this plan and, you know, essentially said, we're not taking any credit for the affordable housing we generated. Uh and and I I have it written down here, I'm sorry, very sorry this night. On round four, Mr. Rossi and Mr. Sushi's um ethics house, they tend to deliver uh. Five four units, do we get credit for that at least? One has already been approved for round four?
We get credit for any units that they built, whether or not they were in this plan and proposed.
So where do they come out? Where where like, you know?
So to your point, when we get further down the line. Then there might not be a need for that same level of density proposed in this plan. So one of the things the planner pointed out earlier today was that the town had a bit possible thirty five extensions of existing. Was only giving thirteen, but there were additional there. So that's another place where that event ultimately adjusts developments going forward. The purpose of today is to put something in front of the courts to say that the town has studied it, made the best effort, has now identified things that they will move forward. The courts do allow us to adjust it as we go forward. None of us up here are happy with the timing of this. No one in the state that sits on any planning board anywhere in the state who's been going through this for the last month is happy with this timing. The only saving grace we all take from it is that going forward, as this continues, there will be many more discussions here, many more hearings, many more opportunities, Miss Paul, well to come. Where we may tweak this and adjust this to avoid some of the things that we all are concerned with going forward, right? Height, size, setbacks, and things of that nature.
And and so that's really my, well, one one of my concerns is that. You know, i- i- it's it's a knock on fact is, okay, this is now our master plan. Ninety four units that fire and this many units here and this many units here. And so every zoning. And and implementing ordinance that comes before us is now gonna be reviewed and forgiven, right? It's gonna be reviewed for massifying consistency. Right? And so like, you know, what do you say when the master plan says, oh, ninety four units, because we didn't take credit for any of these other ones? And you get a zoning ordinance that the only way you're gonna get ninety four units in there that have been approved that are in the master plan. Is by going up six stories and by, you know, eliminating parking and building over the 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 setback line or wherever else it may be. You know, I I I don't like this situation where you're essentially being asked to by a pick and a poke saying, you know, here's what we're gonna do. Now, the council's seen the zoning concept, conceptually.
You said.
Yeah, Miss Miss Hallwell is conceptually familiar with the zoning and what it's gonna be. But we haven't seen it. How how do you, how do we know, how do we know that ninety four units? Putting it, putting that in our master plan to be approved by the court. That if we wanna go back and say, oh, actually, we don't like that so much, it's not gonna be just, you know, smooth sailing. I I feel like, like I said, it it it's a pick and a poke and 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 you're and you're just kind of, you know, this this is just the first domino to fall and then that all wasn't in the master plan and oh, well, it's in the zoning and, you know, oh, well, you know, I don't like it, it's the only we can do, it was in the master plan. Uh so, I I don't know, I'll 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 digress from that and I'll try to on those days. Um so on the on round three, and I'm just going through because um everyone has, you have uh the Quimby Lane redevelopment inclusionary zone, that's thirteen units. Um that's just as as far, and I might be wrong, I'll make sure, because there was some mention in the Q L R P. About satisfying that overlay zones. Affordable housing obligation through construction elsewhere in the Quimby Lane redevelopment area, because the west side is supposed to be a park, according to that um redevelopment park. It it is, is this? This is just for the west side lot better mentioned, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I would respectfully suggest, it seemed, I mean, and I don't know, apparently there's there's Quimby Lane plan that nobody, that the public hasn't seen and and it's gonna change around and things are gonna, you know, um be different. If if the park on the west side is still a consideration, something that we're, you know, hoping to accomplish. Um and we're going to be accomplishing that through expenditure of open space acquisition funds and hopefully receiving green acres reimbursement. Which would eliminate the possibility of developing those west side lots around um the mineberg. Does it make sense at this point to transfer that um. Obligation, affordable housing, overlay obligation onto the lot on the east side. Which are currently zoned for um eighty six, creation of eighty six um total housing units. Um which, when you do do the math, what's that? Seventeen, eighty, what do you, what do you get? What do you want all the, thank you, eighty six times that twenty, it should be that hard.
This is for the whole site, we didn't include all of the units that could potentially be developed here because there's different. Areas of the plan, but there's no plan to change that zoning right now. That's an existing zoned area, so we're taking credit for existing zoning.
I'm not gonna belabor the point, I would just say that if if that is our intent to go and buy that land with an encumberment or green acres restrictions on development. Fair share probably won't like us taking their overlay zone and making it undevelopable. So we might wanna consider while we're talking to fair share and having these conversations, moving that overlay zone to the east side.
But that has nothing to do with what's in front of us tonight.
I know.
Can we keep our comments to things that are in front of us tonight and not your good plan?
Just summarizing what you started with at the same point, which was the DCA chart, right? It it probably does make some sense to update, to try to get an update, because we've had them doing stuff and it clearly looks like we've done nothing. And and, you know, the last twenty ten, twenty five, you know, just.
I mean, we can check the numbers.
Provide that, you know, or or just collect it, just make sure. It it's huge.
It's a bit of optimism. It was being developed right now, if it's not, see, oh. Same, a hundred percent correct, I mean, I'm hoping that, but.
I I'm just saying the comments that you ought to think. How they need and.
Understand that, then we could update that.
Not gonna change any, and I'm not even saying update, planning this, planner just. Let the council know that they are pivoting, you know, it's like, it's not all, like, you're just looking at my path and. Telling me it's some way, it's, well, you are pivoting, there's some.
Yeah, and the point's well taken, and we can add a line about the fact that there are new multifamily projects in the works, or something along those lines to. Be more fair to the work that's.
Okay, I understand the topic and say, I don't know, we'll see whether it is. Starts over again on.
We use the best data we can get, but it's.
I'm just, it's easy, I haven't seen, you know, it's gonna be. Whatever, you agree, I I don't even need to submit it, I just need it for people to feel better. About, sorry, um I'm just wrapping up. Although, yeah.
We discussed before, uh in the report for the Claris redevelopment area. Uh it says that the borough anticipates redevelopment plan would permit approximately ninety four age restricted rentals with a twenty percent threshold, which would provide for eighteen age restricted affordable rental units.
Yeah.
Yes, and then your associate on Monday mentioned after another one, if you please uh just clarify. Which, how many age restricted units there are and how many non age restricted?
There's a proposal for a total of ninety four units, eighteen of which would be ages.
So only more of our.
Correct.
They they're all red, they're all red.
Correct.
So I, can I ask? I have a follow up question on that specific topic. First, just for identification, what's the maximum number of age restricted units that can be. Developed according to the rules?
So it's thirty percent, which I believe is thirty under.
Thirty percent of the total obligation.
Thirty percent of the total obligation.
For the four credits, right?
I'm sorry?
Thirty percent of the units.
Thirty percent of the total credit.
The total credit, okay.
Yeah, so if you have bonus credits in there that were senior credits.
Right, so. In your table, you've got eighteen, correctly, eighteen senior units. And instead of nine credits, bonus credits, you've got eight.
That's because we get capped. So we're twenty six is the total number, so we are claiming half a credit.
Right.
Per unit on that one for, I believe, you know, half a mile of the transit station. Uh that were capped. Uh, that were capped at, um, twenty-six total, so that's why that gets capped. Twenty-six total, we're senior sis, yeah.
You say you, you, you're capped for all purposes, you're capped at twenty-six. So you spread it over the candidates.
They seen, for senior, and then we're capped also with the bonus credits, so. Okay, I took as many bonus credits as I could for that one.
The point is, it's not a technical, the point is that behind the scenes, there's all this optimization, balance.
Metro requirements, we call them, but yeah, there was always minimums and maximums and.
No, I just wanted to be sure it wasn't. And then the limit was, you said thirty percent of all credits. Potentially, which is what I think we're twenty-six coming through. Twenty-eight credits?
We're proposing twenty-six.
Bonus credits?
Now, he, he's going down.
Twenty-eight.
Okay, you're proposing twenty-six senior?
Okay, so yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke. So there's thirty-four total max senior, but we capped that at eight because of the maximum bonus credits of twenty-eight. So we had capped out at eight. Then we capped that because.
That's fine, it's, I'm gonna be sure.
So, uh, the, on the age restriction, at, at what point was the age restriction for the non-affordable units removed from the plan?
Uh, that was removed after the council meeting because, because they noted that that was an incorrect statement.
And it would be impossible, I'm sorry, it would be outside of all this, right?
So I just want to start, you could have all of your affordable housing. Oh, no, you could not, yes, that's true, you need to have some family as well, correct?
We have got fifty percent of family.
So how many?
Max thirty percent.
Um, the, uh. I, I guess, you know, the prior gentleman's question, I, I, I had it, but at, at what point did, did this development opportunity present itself to the council? So, yeah, to, to your. What, what steps were taken by either, um, your office or, or anybody else here? Um, to inquire, um, with. Any downtown property or any property owner in, in Burnerville, uh, about their. Inclination, willingness or thoughts about developing, uh, their properties?
I think it was all volunteer people who just reached out to the council. We didn't.
So the only, you're concerned, you've reached out to the council, that's correct?
That's not entirely true. We did look at all, we looked at all of the area, we looked at vacant lots, we analyzed. All of the town really to see where could potential overlay zones be and then also. Sort of dead talk with those who requested to be in the plan, so those are two pieces, it's looking at what was. Potential would make sense and then there's those who request and. If someone requests to be in the plan, we have to have a creative reason not.
Yeah, I think it's true. And, uh, but, but you did not actually reach out to any of the property owners other than the ones who reached out to the council, that's correct?
That's correct.
Uh, and how many, uh, individuals did reach out to the council?
So far as I know, the, the two pro, the redevelopment, um, Clarus redevelopment, sixty-five Clermont. And then one of the Burners Avenue I two O overlay zone property owners that's reached out.
Okay, and the, uh, I guess the, um, the last question is, um, as far as going forward, Mr., uh, Board Member, uh. The Mark I mentioned, you know, this is just the initial, initial page. Um, does putting a representation in the, uh. Housing element plan that we're going to be seeking a redevelopment designation in any way impact? Or, you know. Impact at all, the obligation of this board. Uh, and the council to undertake. The review necessary to decide whether or not the. Properties qualify as an area in need of redevelopment.
If, if I can understand, make sure I understand this.
You want to know if this allocates us going forward?
Any type of. Well, any, there, there could be two quite, that's our, my, the classification, but if the question is. Does this, uh, language in the founding on the fair share plan? Will require this board to automatically find. That a study area is an area in need of redevelopment, uh, irrespective of whether. They conclude it satisfies one or more of the criteria under section five of local, local redevelopment housing law. Uh, uh, I believe the answer is no, it doesn't require them to do that, there's still an independent. Determination will be made based on planning testimony, uh, in the context of an area in need of redevelopment. Yep, study hearing, we happen to have a redevelopment attorney on the board, it might be concurrent.
We, we're not bound, this does not bind us. It wasn't, it was.
It doesn't bind us, then it could be considered as one. And the council who has to make separate decisions on that is a separate board that we cannot bind. Yeah, they, they, we recommend that they, they, they. So that is not. Proclue or cannot necessarily be used as, you know. Fourth enough to say that yet there's something that doesn't meet the statutory requirement.
I appreciate that. I think, I know the answer to this question, but I just wanna clarify, the way that Mr. Warner raised it is it isn't an automatic approval. Is it that all a consideration? When the board is approaching that determination, well, we thought it was, you know. Not even considered.
It's not one of the statutory factors being weighed upon by the board. What will be a consideration always is there is this overarching obligation to satisfy the affordable units. Right? And is this progress? To top check all, but you still have to meet all the statutory requirements along the way for every point that we.
And so when you're making that determination, it would make no difference to you whether it was part of the master by having all the master plan. Or if this was just a, you know, the one-off development office.
It's not gonna make any difference.
Yeah, and legally.
You don't have oversight for an R D P.
It's, it's legal, but.
Can't, you know, can't, there's. It's, it's a notification to us. Requesting an opinion. With an R D P.
An investigation.
You can't stop it or override it or change it.
Okay.
For this one.
You must, yeah, the board must view and. And co-council here, uh, the, the, uh, the site and criteria. Almost in isolation, so to speak, does the site meet one or more of the criteria? Uh, it doesn't matter who a prospective redeveloper may be. Uh, I don't like that, so my understanding of the, from a legal perspective, it's too intense here, lit, from a legal perspective. Uh, it's my understanding and I, I, I get comforted by the nod and the affirmative from Mr. Mark, uh. That, that is how you deal with this, that those other items don't have, are not evidence of whether or not the criteria are satisfactory.
Thank you.
And, and actually, we have a planner here who does redevelopment work too, so.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask our planner next, is i- in the event that this housing element, not plan, uh, housing element of the master plan is. Uh, adopted, approved. And it turns out that this particular. Inclusionary zone is not found to be an area in need of redevelopment. Does that mean that we are no longer in compliance with our constitutional obligation to provide? Um, a reasonable opportunity for the creation of affordable housing?
Well, we may have the opportunity to zone the site just without doing a redevelopment plan. Or we can replace the site with another site or other units.
So if it's not, I find.
To be bearing to, to prove it most certainly.
There's all kinds of options.
The only, the only time is the, perhaps the only time that one would have reported that. Some immunity, something like that, the TV show, I never go watch. Uh, is, uh, i- is if you don't meet one of the statutory commitments, uh, under the image that they're having yet. But, but otherwise, uh, uh, one reasonably anticipated, we will have opportunities if things evolve and, and. Some plans, some items, some proposed developments don't end out or whatever.
If the plan had any third round plan, some of the scattered sites. Redevelopment areas, for instance, uh, if it's not affordable development areas didn't work out. They were replaced with other areas and.
If they accept this, all we're saying is, collect, is we're seeking. We're not saying we would. In the plan, the plan says we'll seek, and if the, the review of the plan says, okay, we're just using seeking it. Then that's fine, but we're not. Opportunity for committing to. Get, uh, area in need of redevelopment.
Guess what would be accurate providing a realistic opportunity to the development of our. With respect to fourth round E for.
For our realistic opportunity, if we get to the point that we can't create a zone, can't create something for that site, we have to buy another site or other units, so.
If I, with the reminder that I am not a portable housing council, in a star of, um, in. Planning board attorney, so, is. Take my advice, boy, my people.
On the topic of this Clarus redevelopment plan, and I think, um, I'm interpreting this correctly, I'm pretty sure. An R D P would be required because of the distribution of units. That's the proposed, so no, no three bedroom apartments in this. Proposal.
I mean, what it, what it gives you is more control over how someone develops. If you have straight zoning, if you say, don't do this, don't do that. Not as much.
Earlier, but you're buying a thing, if you're, if you're saying that, you know, thi- this is, you know, a ninety-four unit. And our current zoning does not allow for ninety-four unit, then you're essentially saying that. Yeah, and.
And they have to say, that's okay with us.
If this is, this, this is what we're seeing, my, my concern is if this is, if, if the realistic opportunity that this site presents. Is contingent upon a determination that this is an area in need of development. Rides to a constitutional level of.
I would say it's contingent on, because we did mention a couple other ways it could be accomplished.
Again, we're not, we're not bound by that. All right, you may not like.
No, it's okay.
That's the best answer you're gonna get.
We're not bound by it, so if we hear later that this is something we have to do, this is in the master plan. I can say, actually, we're not bound by that, we can seek different opportunities to meet those. Same.
If a professional planner says it satisfies one or more of the criteria of local redevelopment housing law, and this board would find it. Uh, as, as confident in an area in need of redevelopment. And the council would reaffirm that and they would take that recommendation, and that's, of course, a local redevelopment and housing law. No matter what other options are offered, may or may not be out there. Uh, it's, it's, so it's based on the criteria. Uh, if they're not bound by it, uh, but by the same token, if it satisfies the criteria. Frankly, uh, uh, I don't believe they have the opportunity as a board to say anything other than if it meets the criteria, just like the barriers.
They don't have any option. The R D P definition is in the realm of the council, and whether they believe, if some.
It's a designated area redevelopment, then that will.
It's there.
The, the board will base it on the evidence presented at the time, it won't get.
Yeah, the board doesn't, we, we do not. We're not part of it, we, basically, the decision is all the council.
You made an investigation, uh, to whether it.
Here the area needed redevelopment, and we made those visits.
No, we do not. Beg, beg to differ, we do, we just are asked for our consent. And we respond, the planning.
Yeah, we gave a recommendation.
Recommendation, we do not determine whether it's gonna be an R D P.
The committee provided the legal invite, led the chairman's. What he believes, any other?
The, uh, the presentations all already did in, uh, February, meant that a, um. Thirty day grace period for an extension of deadline, um, to submit or adopt the housing on the fair share plan to. I'm sorry, I missed the pronunciations.
There was some potential, um. There was an idea that that was gonna be easier again.
Yeah, the vast, the vast majority did deny us. What's, what's his name? Fifty or a hundred of them, they were all that I. But, but, um, and, and I'm unaware of any that ran this, but did not seek an extension. See, and no one wants to be, both, both sitting for a certain decision, uh, on the part of our. The, uh, was not a reserve entity while waiting to get the denial, the, the, um.
I wonder, Mr. Chair, we have resolution. Yeah, yeah, I don't know, here, you're involved in that. Just, it's just, we're finding the suggestion here. For the council is that the concept of Highlands was brought, and you, you may have it all nailed and it's all. Figured out and you had presentations of what the consequences were, but just in the context of this, just double check that. We're good. You know, if there are any, any issues with Highlands' compliance or, because it's recent, you know, so, um.
Yeah.
This has been in process.
Absolutely.
But it's just a suggestion.
So well taken and I would, uh, submit.
Eliminate the priority.
For their review.
Well, then we're concerned that the council might be blindsided by something because it was recent or whatever, that's all, it's just like, oh, wow. He mentioned it, so, and it is fairly recent, so.
Some comments to the board.
Yeah, we have any comments discussion from the board?
Um, a couple of comments, um. I recognize we are facing a statutory deadline. And I recognize and I'm holding on to that, that this is a conceptual plan and we will be working on this, so you will be moving forward. And I'm going to ask moving forward, or I'm going to start with the fact that I'm not fully comfortable with your report.
With what?
With your report.
Okay.
Um, on, on a more limited side, just starting with the community profile, where it's basically just census data from twenty twenty. Not that it's incredibly specifically important to the moment, by twenty to twenty twenty-five. Everything about how the town works and whether people work from home or not. Um, has completely changed, so there was no independent analysis, it was just, you know, here, here's the data from the census. And that was the first thing that troubled me, that there was no independent analysis. But I'm really troubled by the fact that you don't have independent, specific knowledge of the sites. That you're recommending in your report, and I understand that you rely on the council for what they have clearly thought about. What it is, but if you're going to own this report and sign that report. And, and as it gets amended or addressed further, I would really like to see that. That type of awareness in an report, in, in a report that you're putting your name to is there. To not know what the acreage is or not know what, what the restrictions might be. That matters, we're only talking about four sites. And, um, so asking, moving forward.
We, we did, we did that analysis, I just didn't have it right, I don't have it memorized. And we looked at the hazard areas, we looked at acreages, we looked, we looked at all of that. So there is analysis and with respect to the twenty twenty data. The issue is that's the best data you have is the census data, and when you go into. The only other data that you have are projections after the decennial census, so. They project in the same trajectory that their estimates, so the estimates. Aren't as good as the. Aren't as good as the actual census. So I usually for these plans like to use a census unless we're really getting close to like twenty thirty where they haven't been done for a while, so. I mean, that's why we use the twenty twenty.
It was an extraordinary period of time where the census data in and of itself really wasn't enough.
In interestingly, in in with respect to the numbers, but DCA, uh we had to use old. Census information to put up data and to use new stuff, couldn't correct it when there were obvious errors. It's unfortunate, but that's the process I thought as it's all, it's a synergy, but. It's not a perfect process that that we've been given to work with as municipal is uh from the state. You know, I don't necessarily disagree with the resident who appeared that, you know, there. Are other zones that were previously looked at and upzone or redevelopment, you know, more included in here. Um but again, knowing that the sites picked were people who. Apparently came to the town and want to develop and the goal is to have these units developed in the state. You know, I'm I'm fine with the sites that were ultimately selected, you know, I'd be. I look forward to that, forward discussion on how they shake out, what they look like, you know, how they function, I think all that. More supremely important in the long run. Um about traffic and their long term effect on the community in the downtown. And I think we're gonna have some good helping discussion on that like we always.
But yeah, again, I'm um a lot of comments about unhappiness with the process, I raise accelerated process as a part of the state. Um you know, I've been looking, you know, towards in the future, we can always be more communicative and accountable. Um these last year are the ones that were. Um well, you know, I I do feel confident that these are lots that are, you know, well, two percent well integrated into the downtown. Future could reasonably provide employment opportunities, transportation opportunity, you know. I think that, you know, that's kind of a real intention of this process, even if things have gotten a little messy at the state level, um so. We intend to vote yes. Well, not one look diet, I understand.
We should talk some work down, maybe indicate where you're going.
What's the um.
Deliberating.
Yeah, yeah, this. We always have a pulse of deliberation.
No comments. Yeah, I would say during the process, um I do have one other suggestion. And it may have already been done, but and if I was on the council, I kind of want an idea of. A schedule. And like some of these are low hanging fruit, like, oh, yeah, we can do, and I don't need to know if there's any compliance issues. Does anyone come and check you after two years and say, hey, how you doing? Did you do any work? And.
We do annual reporting and.
Not in this presentation, but I I would think you'd have a straw man for the council that says. Is what we're gonna do, we're gonna extend the, you know, on the thirteen and that's gonna be this year's. You know, number and then we think it's this and that and and what, because you have a ten year projection, right? And at least go through that exercise with them. Just the discussion can create some insight and. And whatever, just have that discussion.
It's good, Eddie.
That's all I really have.
So the board, as Steve quoted the deliberation, as previously mentioned, we do have a revolution that we distributed. Uh in advance to the board's consideration, I grant welcome part of it. Uh to make sure that our planner uh found that the housing on fair share plan met certain uh statutory requirements. Is to be the M L U L and the Orbital Housing, excuse me, the Fair Housing Act. Um the resolved paragraph of that resolution, should you adopt it momentarily. Or that we hereby adopt the housing on fair share plan and recommend that the mayor and borough council at the door implement saying. This resolution and the plan will be filed, will be secured for within forty eight hours of adoption by the board. Which is done by everybody, and what we by Orbital Housing Council, Jack Fidget. Uh and further resolve that a copy of this resolution. Should be sent to the Office of Planning and Activism in Somerset County Planning Board, together with a copy of the plan, within thirty days of adoption. Uh which is larva, so adhere to that's out of the M L U L. So uh it is the board's pleasure to adopt the resolution and make those recommendations and adhere to those statutory obligations. Uh it would be a motion to adopt the resolution, a second and a roll call vote, majority for that, four out of six. It's the hardest man I should have heard of. I'll move with that plan.
Second. Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Walden?
Yes.
And Mr. Zeller.
Yes.
Move it in Paris.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Anything on the agenda you want to. Okay, thanks. No executive session. Uh next meeting is in a month.
Yes, our next meeting is July twenty fourth. Yes, so uh yesterday, we just. Part of the documents from the mayor of Burnham filled with whispering words here. I spoke with the attorney late yesterday noon. And I offered them July twenty fourth or August fourteenth, because I believe we've not had the sun by November.
For the uh sent order, the yes, was entered by the court.
Yeah, and um. Their attorney spoke with the team and the applicant and they would like to do this one for us, they like them.
Okay, alright, I'm.
Be here on the twenty fourth, but.
Maybe.
We're curious about, I mean. So.
Anyway. Well, you should, you should do a a forum, you know, check, make sure.
And I mentioned to you about Mr. Sasso, I'm fine, he's gonna be up. But he would like to participate in this.
Oh, that will, well, I'll do look into that.
Do a special instead, instead of the time he's gonna be on either. Why do you say he?
By too soon.
Yeah, I think it's pretty soon. And there you go, a wife. Well, I think it's work.
This is, we have pure work, right? We have a most.
We can figure it out, figure it out, see if there's any.
We only have eight.
With that.
Be away, he was leaving today instead. Switch to.
You don't think he is, I think his wife was. A week before and I think it's only a week.
Oh.
So it's eight to be back.
And did everyone appear now? Is everyone okay?
I feel.
Yep.
So that's fine.
I think we're gonna get, I think we're already there, I think we're there.
We should just.
So 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 that'll be.
Yeah, well, I'm going to um. I was kind of going to go and check. And again, for uh Chad's request in the beginning of the evening, it is really important, but there was a little confusion this afternoon because. There were basically half the board and. So I had to call the people.
Gonna go and confirm the record.
No, it's not, but it is, gentlemen, we all have other commitments that we do. And at four thirty and at five thirty and at six o'clock, I didn't know if I had a meeting or not. Because no one had responded and it's it's. It's out of respect to each of us and our schedules, it doesn't take much.
I assume that every, every time it scares anybody, it's.
Yes.
I I said, I assume there's.
You're supposed to be either anyone.
And it would be nice to respond, but sometimes things get as well.
Right, but but if that happens, we have the board and then, you know, if half the board shows up and we can't have a meeting.
Right.
You know, it it at the at the eleventh hour, it's not fair to people compared to the applicant or whatever.
If there wasn't a meeting today, I would have showed up here, I would have, you know, again, I I would have just showed up, that's.
But.
I assume there's a meeting. But.
Well, yeah, I would always, if if there's not going to be a meeting, I definitely reach out there. But but and for four o'clock this afternoon, you send out a nothing, only four people. So that said to me, for people, we can't have a meeting and nobody else responded and I didn't hear from anyone else. And there were other things that I would have, I would have arranged my, the rest of my day differently. So it it's just on Tuesdays, when we get the agenda. You have to open it, it's not, it's not a text message, it's not a phone call, you can respond at two o'clock in the morning. It's it just.
Can't be like it was this. It's got to, there has to be.
It's an email.
We've we've got to establish a forum. Uh at the latest Wednesday, you know, to close the group business. If we don't do that, we have the cans.
Well, exactly, and and we had talked about this a while now, I didn't want you to decide not to do it the week prior because. Something's too far in advance, exactly, and and things can change, so. Things change for everyone last minute, but two days ahead, an email will not wake someone up, someone up in the middle of the night. You just respond.
So maybe adjust the target to agenda and forum check, you know, and let's, let's. Let's do the Tuesday. Let's use the agenda distribution. As the also solicitation for the forum check.
Okay.
Is it an urgent item?
Well, I.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
So it's up to you.
I take the word.
Honestly, whatever you want to do, I think we. We do have to make sure we know, um as a. It's no later than close of business Wednesday. You send it out Tuesday, sorry, you gotta either look at it Tuesday night or you've got to process it. Be not you, I mean, yeah, be us. Me too.
No, I'm Friday.